See none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post and the minutes have been approved. And we have our consent agenda where we have our monthly budget board bills. We have eight employment resignations and thirteen employment recommendations. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Want to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion?
My question would be, are we full up on staffing or are we? Uh, we're pretty, I think, yeah, I think at this point we are. Anyone has any? Pairs, yep, we need a couple yet, one or two? Okay.
Okay, two more.
One full-time 4K and two pairs yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? See none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post and the consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have accommodation, Mr. Kolpak.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Pete Kolpak, I'm the Ag Teacher and FFA Advisor at the high school. Thanks for having me up here this evening, I requested to be on the school board meeting to thank Compure Financial and Doug Kuchko as we applied for and received a $4,000 grant this past spring through their Ag Education and Classroom Equipment Grant. I applied for that this last April and met with Brad Kissling and ordered lights and we're going to be putting in a second bank of grow lights in the greenhouse area. So we'll be able to have more flowering plants and whatnot with our spring plant sale and then also hoping to grow some additional veggies and lettuce for the lunch program. So, so far, we've spent of that $4,000, $2,565 on the LED grow lights. And then we're also going to be updating the lighting system for three or four of the lettuce towers, so they will replace the fluorescent lights and get some LED lights, which are just a little bit easier to work with. So some exciting things in the greenhouse. Then also going to put one more plug in as a Beef Superintendent for the Barron County Fair, just want to thank Compure Financial for assisting us with the fair again this summer. So this, this year, we sold ninety-six animals, had a record-breaking sale by about $60,000. And for kids within the Rice Lake School District, including this past year's graduates, they would have raised 134,000 of that dollars going to Rice Lake grads or Rice Lake students, which is pretty awesome. Obviously, that's not all profit, but certainly that's a pretty cool thing and hopefully they're able to put that towards future schooling and that sort of thing. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Pete.
All right.
That's what I was wondering if you could see, he kind of peeked around the corner at you.
There you go. Perfect.
But you could turn around.
I made him.
I just couldn't see who was at the podium.
All right, well, thank you, Compure, for that nice fund to help our ag program. And next, we have the 24-25 seclusion and physical restraint data report.
All right, you should have the report in front of you, this is something that we're required to do annually to report out on our seclusion and restraints for this throughout the school year. As you can see, we've had a total of eleven seclusions and four restraints at Tainter, one at the middle school, one of each at the middle school. And so our numbers significantly went down last year. Any questions?
What would you attribute that to?
A lot of different things, I think education, we did have a couple of students move out. Some, as kids get older, they learn to self-regulate better and students who, when they're young, might need to be restrained or secluded, as they get older, don't. So, you know, it just, as kids moving in and out of the district, sometimes we get kids that just can't regulate and are sometimes a danger to sell for others and then we have to engage. So, but also working with staff to make sure we're doing, you know, the least restrictive when possible, so.
Is the majority of staff trained on it?
All of the special education staff are, the principals are, a handful of other people.
If I can interrupt to answer your question, no, I would say not the majority of staff are trained in, in the actual how to do seclusions and restraints, but.
Yeah, maybe a handful of other people that might, you know, like a hog in, you know, the staff is so small, you want, you always want at least three, two that, you know, depending on the age of the child, you either use a one or two-person restraint, one to observe, so you need at least three people are trained.
Yes, they're always good called at all normally for that.
Yeah, and they are also included in this report, so if a, if a police officer restrains a student, we have to include them in our data. So sometimes they, and they don't necessarily have to follow the same rules as we do. We, it truly is at least restrictive, child is danger to sell for others. A police officer can come in and put handcuffs on a child for, they follow their own police rules, but we still have to report that as restraint because the child was restricted in their movement. But then that's documented a little bit different to the state. Do, we do identify how many are police interventions.
And if I can add one more piece kind of to Miriam's question, e- even the formal training, you know, the first part of it is de-escalation techniques, so if, if a student is escalated, you know, and that part of the training, I think, pretty much all staff get it, or that's, I don't know if that's a part of youth mental health first aid, not, no, not formally part of that, but.
No, but we do try to train staff on de-escalation techniques for sure, because that, and I would say, I, it's probably more than, than the first half of the class is, I mean, the focus of the class is how do you de-escalate kids? It's, again, it's because it's the last resort, last thing you want to do for a student is to put them in a restraint or put them in seclusion, because we all know that that can be really traumatic for a kid. So we try really hard not to do it, but there are times when they are really hurting themselves or others and we just, we can't not do it either, so got to keep everybody safe in the building, including themselves sometimes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Next, we have student attendance and chronic absenteeism for the 24-25 school year.
Yes, so with that in your, this page is in your packet and with that, it goes back about, I don't know, nine, ten years, however many years are on there. And with that showing our chronic absenteeism data over time. And so just a reminder to, to anyone listening, a student considered chronically absent is defined as missing 10% of the, or more of the school year for any reason, so the equivalent of about eighteen days of school. Students who are medically excused, things like that, they don't count in here, but, and school activities don't count. So say, you know, high schoolers leaving early to whatever, girls soccer in the spring or track, something like that, leaving early doesn't count in here. And so where you are, you know, it's been a focus, you know, we've talked about it a lot at the, at the board level, at the school level, at the staff level, and just happy to report that our numbers, especially as compared to, you know, four or five years ago, continue to go down and, and for some of them, they're the best numbers we've had in a, in a really long time, so.
Compliment the middle school, just, we had their lowest number ever.
Yeah.
Well, that you're, gave us, yeah, that's on the list, so.
Yes, and, you know, a lot of that is, yes, our administration, our support staff, Stacia Cross, our attendance coordinator, our SROs, you know, Andy Johndro and Stephanie Bowle, it, it takes everyone and, you know, and just as a reminder, it's not intervening early and it's not intended to, you know, whack people with a stick, it's, hey, what, regular attendance is important, how can we help? In terms of, of, you know, what can we do to, to ensure we establish those healthy habits and, and you have your child here as, as much as possible. And so with that, that, that will be a continued focus and, and just wanted to, to report the good numbers to you and, and show some appreciation for the people that are working really hard on this, so.
Randy, it looks to me like the baseline for the high school is 25%. That doesn't sound good on the face of it.
Yeah.
Comment on that, I mean, there's a bump for a couple of years there where it was even worse.
Yeah, and with that, you know, things like appointments and, and, you know, different pieces, because I think pre-excused absences go in, get figured in here. Yeah, they do like, you know.
That doesn't count towards the truancy criteria, does it?
No, but, but overall.
Excused, five days per.
Right, that's different, you know, I say I, you know, check my high schooler out to go on a college visit for a couple of days or something, not truant at all, that's excused, but that would count towards, you know, count towards this, and so.
Bit of an absence is counted for that.
Mm-hmm, they do, just overall, you know, number of days kids are gone, so yeah, twenty-four, you know, almost 25% of our high schoolers were, you know, gone eighteen days or more. And so, yeah, that's something we want to track and like you say, way better than, than a few years ago and even going back, yeah, to sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, better data than, better data than that, but something we'll continue to work on.
Do we know anything about the achievement of the kids that are absent? It's, I guess, not all the same students comprised of 25%, but I'll bet you a lot of them are pretty much the same, do we have any knowledge of these achievements?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't tracked that, but we certainly could take a look at that, you know, for the kids that are missing the most.
Same as everybody else, it's one thing, but.
Right, right.
Not, it tells you something.
Yep, exactly.
Because this is one of the variables in our report card, isn't it?
It is, it is, yep.
Any other questions?
How does this compare to other schools? I mean, is this pretty typical, at that, you have 25% at that high school rate?
Yeah, I don't, I, I haven't looked officially, my guess is, yeah, it's, it's probably in that ballpark, just with a number of things, sometimes high schoolers are doing or other things are in, or like I said, college visits or things like that. I know there have been several articles in the last few years that most districts, and this is across the country, are struggling significantly with attendance rates. And so, you know, to see ours, you know, on the improving end of things, we're really happy about it and a lot of work goes into it and, but, you know, we're happy to continue to do that work.
Yeah, hate to beat ourselves up if we know that we're kind of the norm, I mean, if this is average.
Yes.
How do we handle sports, you know, kids leaving for the day for sports?
Yep, then that doesn't.
That's not, that does not count.
Yep, school activities don't count.
I mean, we have a lot of that going on.
Right, right.
Okay, well, that's good.
What if, what about kids taking the day to go to the state football game?
Yeah, that would be a pre-excused absence, that, that would be in here, but yeah.
Would be, right.
Yep, things like that. And, and by law, every student in the district has ten, you know, pre-excused absences during the, to use during the course of the year. You know, theoretically, I could walk in on day one and pre-excuse my child for the next ten days, but then those are burned up for the year, but, yeah, every, every child has those guaranteed by state statute.
Is that full day or if they miss like an hour of the day is that counted?
We counted hours, so, yeah, we counted by hour, so periods, whatever, half-days at the elementary, you know, stuff like that. Yep, so meaning if they're gone, just like first period, it doesn't count as one whole day.
But I think technically it can, according to the statute, if they're gone unexcused part of a day, it can.
But he was talking about pre-excused, so, yep, if we, if we, yeah.
Either, either or.
But if we talk about unexcused, yes. If, if my child was more than ten minutes late, more than ten minutes late every day for a week, yeah, they're considered truant, because that's an unexcused absence and, and that's the definition of truancy, you know, chronic absenteeism definition is gone 10% or more of the year, definition of someone being truant is five or more unexcused absences, even part of a day in a semester. And so we have when, when a student hits three, two or three, three, the first letter and meeting.
So three days or fifteen periods, five days.
Yeah. And there are municipal options there as well.
Any other questions? All right.
Could you also, Randy, break down the percentages to which ones, how much of the 24% is actually unexcused versus excused?
You bet.
Because I think that's a better reference as to what we're trying to parse.
Yep.
Yeah, and maybe where in the day too, because are they just not getting to school in the morning, are they going out for lunch and not getting back in time continually? Like, is there things that we should be looking at as a board to hope?
So you wanted my black dawn lunch?
All right.
Closing off campus.
Any other questions? All right, we will move on then to the 25-26 Warriors on Wisconsin Program Student Informational booklet, this is our first reading, so this will be brought back for a second reading in our next meeting.
Yeah, good evening, I'm here to talk about the, the draft version of the WOW booklet, kind of a timeline, if you remember back in about eight, in your April meetings is when we typically do the first and second reading of the high school, the entire high school information book. I, I like to meet, I meet with the WOW staff every summer, about midsummer, I call it retreat, they say you don't take us anywhere fancy, so I'm not supposed to call it a retreat, but we meet for a day and a half and just to kind of go over the year and, and then I get input from them and whatnot on any changes. So there's, there's kind of two different parts here, number one is any change that was in the Rice Lake High School Student Information Book is reflected here, so for example, some of the dress slow, dress code language that you had and things like that. And then second, we look at, is there anything in particular about WOW that we want to address? Really, there was two things that we did, is we adjusted our daily schedule a little bit to, to mirror the high school schedule even more because of our, our traveling staff. So one thing that we did is we took out our advisory time, which accounted for about thirty minutes during the school day, and we're going to do our advisory pieces during our home and our resource, we can deliver those, though, deliver that information there. So we've actually increased our instructional time a little bit in our core classes when our staff are there. So for example, we share ELA, social studies and science and math staff with the high school, so we can better utilize, utilize those folks. And then another thing we did is we wanted to clean up our, our online pieces a little bit, so we developed an online learning guide, there's now a link that'll be in this handbook that'll go to like, you know, what is the expectation when I take an online class, which again, our online is with a teacher there, it's not, they're working from home like a virtual academy, but it allows the student to know what they need to do in terms of notes, the rules about quizzes and tests and things like that. So that is kind of added into this version of the handbook too. So that kind of wraps up, I got everything kind of on page thirty-one as an addendum, but you'll see again, things that mirror what we did at the high school information book and things that were specific to the WOW programming.
Any questions?
One thing on page sixteen.
Yep.
The parent teacher conferences.
I need to add the word four in there, I think, I just caught that, yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Byzy?
Yes.
Wondering on page nineteen, you're talking about security cameras. We're, we're gonna probably pass the revised 731.2 use of security cameras and electronic monitoring equipment, assuming we're going to pass that a little bit, would you include a reference to that?
Absolutely, yep. So that's, that's going to be passed today, you're saying, in your policies?
It's first reading, it'll be the second reading.
So just want to update that policy here, hyperlink it, sure.
And then on page twenty-seven, it, you know, we're, we're talking about bullying and harassment by students and then we talk about establishing complaints procedures and things like that, and then in the middle of that, there's a paragraph about promotion, retention of students in grades nine through twelve, just seems like that's misplaced in the document.
Okay, so we want to.
I don't get the connection why it's in that section.
I, I don't, it's not connected, it's just the linear way it's laid out.
Talking about this, it's like ABA thing.
Okay, so move that around a little bit.
Well, it's up to you, but it, it just, I, I couldn't figure out why it was where, where it is.
Sure, I can, I can work on that.
Just wanted to draw your attention to that case.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this is the first reading, this will be brought back to our board at our next board meeting for a second reading and final approval. Next, we have the Finance Committee meeting update.
Yes, we met just prior to this evening's regular board meeting at four forty-five, all members were present. We touched on a few topics, one being that if, if you recall back when we were fundraising for the athletic complex, we initially had bleacher seat sales where we could have engraved seating. Tim was here from the athletic department and discussed the fact that maybe we could bring that back and sell seats again, which we were in support of and bringing that back if somebody wanted to do that and we could look at options for those funds and, and using it towards the complex or whatever in the future. We talked about the pool usage fees in a community facility, we, it was discussed that the pool facility is an entity separate from the school district because it is in the district's community service fund eighty area and it's not a, it is a community facility and not a district facility. So that's why we have to make sure we're very careful and with the DPI in terms of how we go about reporting and funds that are, you know, charged with the pool usage. We talked about athletic training services, it's become inherently difficult to find those that are trained to do the athletic training services for all of our events. And we directed the administration to review the options that are there, including potentially even looking at hiring an athletic trainer within the district if necessary to, to meet our needs there. And with that, we reviewed and approved the bills and scheduled our next meeting for September fourth at eight o'clock.
Any questions? All right, thank you for that update, Doug. Next, we have the Compensation Committee meeting update and we have an action item on that for support staff.
Okay, so we met Thursday, August seventh at five o'clock, all members were present. We went over the support staff compensation and it was suggested to us to give a three percent increase, which is the same as we did with the teachers, correct?
Yes.
And then, do we want to do an action now or?
Yeah, let's do an action.
So I'm looking.
Would you entertain a motion to approve?
And can I talk just a little bit about that before?
Go ahead.
Yep, so I'm going to pull it up, thank you. So, all right, so here's, and you've seen this before, a couple of potential changes here, and so those are mainly in yellow. Head custodian at the high school, we haven't had one for a while now, but recommending that if we, if we hire that position back, they would be at the same level as the middle school and tainter head custodians. Also, maintenance one, again, we don't have anybody in that role right now, but had to make an adjustment to that role because handbook language says it will be a seven and a half percent difference compared to maintenance two. No changes other than the increase in grades two, three, four, or in the para work group. Attendance coordinator just wasn't on the schedule before, so wanted to make sure, it just lived in our, in a substitute piece, which we'll talk about in a minute, also putting that on there, as well as we have lead cook positions at the middle school and tainter and their, their responsibilities are in between a cook and the head cook position at the high school. And so Callie was recommending to Victor and I to establish that in there as well, as well as that kitchen manager role at the middle school was not, not definitely placed on here either. Lifeguards, you know, putting on this schedule, we've, we've given those increases previously, this would represent a three percent increase for next year. Last piece, we talked about, there's this evaluation meets bonus piece. In talking with Bob Butler about that, just with labor laws, he recommended including that just in their regular hourly rate and dealing with the, and, and dealing with the evaluation piece, I mean, we can continue to do that, but I, I think you potentially have a slippery slope there in terms of an hourly employee and doing a bonus based on hours worked at the end of the year. So that was his, so if you would approve that, like this seventy-seven cents an hour would just go in, into their hourly wage versus them getting that in July.
Any questions? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the support staff compensation schedule as presented.
So moved.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion?
Kevin, since my daughter's a lifeguard, do I abstain? From the vote? Just let me know.
Let the record show that Andy is abstaining, everybody else, all in favor signify by saying aye. Post and that has been approved. All right, next, we have the curriculum. Yeah, you got more to go.
Not done yet.
All right, so we talked about the substitute compensation and we decided to move them up to the highest level on the first day, so this is for teachers and paraprofessionals, do you want to show them that?
Yes, so, I can make this even a little bigger. So with that, we've operated for several years where as a substitute teacher, I came in at $125 a day, after five days, I went to $150. And with that, with rates changing, number one, that's tough to track and as over time, districts around us are moving to that right off the bat as well. And we were suggesting the same thing for pairs as well, just going to that little bit higher rate right off the bat instead of having them work five days and, and then giving that rate. So that was in the, and the committee was in support of that as well.
Perfect, all right, and then we went over the contracted staff compensation, which we also gave a three percent increase and the contracted staff would be like the IT personnel.
Yep, some positions here, yes, bet.
And then we moved into closed session. Do you want anything more on that?
Yeah, no, I think we're good there and.
And that's about it, and we do not have a meeting date scheduled yet.
All right, any questions? Thank you for that update.
Tried to hurry.
Next, we have the Curriculum Committee meeting, Curriculum Committee met on July fifteenth and all board members were present. We, on the agenda, we approved the minutes on the agenda items, we got an update on renaming the FACE culinary courses that will be offered for 25-26. Sarah was there to explain all of that and the goal is to align with CVTC courses and shared the budget consideration for a growth plan, well laid out, well thought out, did a good job. And then an update on the FACE Education and Training Career Cluster course. Marsha provided an update on the courses offered this year in the Education and Training Career Clusters that including the number of students taking the courses. And then we got an update on the Financial Literacy Curriculum Development, the, the new course that we're going to be offering for financial literacy for all of our students before they graduate. We still will be offering the higher level one in the, in that category as well. And then we talked about the Literacy Intervention Program at the middle school called STARI and got some information on that as well as how the implementation looks, the materials used and that sort of thing. And so with that, we set our next meeting for August twenty-fifth at five o'clock and that was our meeting. Any questions or comments? All right. Next, Buildings and Grounds update. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met on July twenty- Committee met on July twenty-first. We talked about the Rice Lake Youth Baseball Association Field Renovation Consideration for Reimbursement. The field that they asked for some help in the re-renovation process is the field, baseball field that is at the college. They put some money into the infield dugouts and water lines for that, for that field, made it a nice ball field. And with that, they had some issues when they were running some of the water lines and things, and the cost got a little higher than what they anticipated, so they were asking for some funds. So we're, we asked to have them specifically give us some more information on what they really needed and were asking for. Now, we talked about advertising and promotion in the district. The committee approved the administration to investigate new avenues for athletic advertising and promotion in the district. So we're, you know, with the new sign at the sports complex, there's some opportunities there for putting some ads on the big screen, and possibly going forward in the, in the gymnasium, having a screen in there as well in the future. So there'd be an opportunity to, to sell some advertising to help fund some of our athletic programs to keep our, our costs for our students down, if not at zero where they're at now. Next, we talked about the college gymnasium update. The committee approved using the college gymnasium for gymnastics, and directed the administration to look at putting the Warrior logos in the building, so it was more like ours and not the old Charger logo, and not just a place then that our, our gymnastics is, is getting put, but actually, they can be proud of that place and that facility and be part of the district. And so we're excited to have an opportunity for the gymnastics team to have a place to have their floor and their equipment set up and stay set up, so they don't have to take it up and put it down after every practice and before every practice. Student Center, childcare update. There, we talked about the mats at the college as well, the student center at the college, where we would have that childcare update or that facility. The big topic was the county Buildings and Grounds Committee did not like the idea of having the playground out on the backside of that facility, and, which is the least expensive place to have it, and the most convenient place to have it for our, our facility use of that building. And so Randy will be going to the county on Friday to meet with that committee again and give them our thoughts and input and see where that turns out. Pool update. We got a pool update on the pool building and the startup of the pool operations. As far as operations, it was a few little hiccups here and there, but things are going pretty well with all of the operations and things. There's a little bit with air exchangers and things, and the biggest thing is up there, some of the stainless steel is starting to show some surface rust, and so they're looking into what's causing that and what we can do to solve it. So that was the pool update.
Did they end up putting a TV up there for viewing?
Not yet. Not yet. That's still in discussion. Community Center, Boys and Girls Club update. Administrative, administration gave us an update on the community center, the status, the project, projected schedule. They got the windows cut. There was a confusion on the cement walls that were brought in and in sections that were supposed to have windows that didn't, and so they got cut in and now are in place. The roof is on in the gymnasium side, so they're, they're making progress. It's coming along. They're working every day. So it's exciting to see the changes coming there. Summer maintenance projects, administration presented that the summer maintenance projects are all on schedule, cleaning, painting, updating is all in good shape. Then Pete Kopeck, who was just here earlier, is, was asking about potential of a hoop greenhouse out at the conservancy so that they could have more space to have a greenhouse to where they could have more product to sell in the springtime, and looking at grants and some funding for that, so he can, can have that out at the conservancy. We gave him positive support on that to continue looking at ways he can do that. Hail damage update. The administration presented the remaining hail damage projects to be completed that are being paid for by the insurance company. We should be, I think the WOW building is getting siding. That's about one of the last ones that we had there, so we're about done with the hail damage issues. And then DTO AC, the committee did approve reconfiguring the AC system, and was that going to be done yet this fall?
Hopefully, yeah.
And then, next date to, next meeting date to be determined. Any questions?
Where's DTO's?
District Technology Office. Air conditioning for the server room has been an issue for a long time, and we're sick of fixing it. So it's like, let's, let's get it fixed the way it should be.
It's either too cold or too hot for the staff and the computers, and it doesn't work.
I feel like it's an issue in this room. It's like a swamp cooler in here.
And on the gymnastics, so that they, they are going to do their practice, are they also having meets at the college then too?
Everything will be, that'll be their facility.
Very exciting.
That's awesome. That's really great. Cool.
Is, is there an extra cost to having the windows cut in to the Boys and Girls Club?
No.
No. I don't know.
Anyway, it's not our concern, right?
Well, there is, yes, there is an extra cost, just not to us. Yes.
Not, not to Boys and Girls Club or us.
Not to us.
Yes.
Yeah. They was engineered correctly, but they weren't cut in, so.
Somebody didn't do their job.
Or dotted lines there.
Basically.
Yes.
Basically, yes. They did not cut on the dotted line. Any other questions? Lot of stuff there for Buildings and Grounds. All right, next, next, we have policy. So first reading for a number of policies. Policy six sixty-five, which is fraud prevention and reporting, that's just a revision. Policy six seventy-two, purchasing is a revision with the rule six seventy-two that we're recommending for deletion. Policy seven thirty-one point two, electronic surveillance policy, that's a revision. Policy seven sixty, the food service management, a revision with the rule seven sixty to be revised. And then policy eight thirty, use of school facilities, that was under review, and the rule eight thirty, use of school facility regulations, that is revised. So those policies and rules will come back as a first reading. Any questions on any of those before we move on? If not, those, like I said, will come back at our next meeting for final reading and approval. We also, Phil gave a good update on the Wisconsin state legislator and where they were at that time. And then we talked about the Supreme Court ruling from June on the parental notification and how that will, will work in the district. Upcoming policies, we've got a number of more policies that we'll be addressing, and we adjourned. Any questions? All right, see none. Then, Phil, WASB Public Policy Correspondent.
You sounded like Napoleon Dynamite there for everyone else. He went, yes.
Can I serve you a nice pass? There were just a few items on the legislative update blog because the legislature is not doing anything in session right now. So one update was on, at the federal level, just information that the education department is encouraging states to seek waivers from K through twelve education laws and regulations if they see there is a way to innovate, to improve student performance, because at that level, they're not pleased with the results of the twenty twenty-four National Assessment of Educational Progress. And you have to document how you think the waiver will help educate the kids and how you're going to evaluate the results of that. WASB is instituting a new resource to track the effect of not indexing for inflation. They have a nice graph on there that shows that since twenty-eleven, accounting for inflation, we're about thirty-five hundred dollars behind. Then, they talked about per student spending in another blog post, and it was based on information from the Wisconsin Policy Forum, but I, I did not remember to look up what the perspective of the Wisconsin Policy Forum is. But I was interested in that, just to learn the facts, and also, it kind of interests me that so much discussion around education centers around how much money we're putting into it or not putting into it, but relatively less on what the results from the education are. You always hear the dollars per pupil, but you don't really hear that as much about the test scores. So I looked into that a little bit more, just for my own interest, and I knew you guys are always interested in a little bit of a longer report, so I'll give you some of the information. Wisconsin, according to the Wisconsin Policy Forum, the per capita spending per pupil in Wisconsin, the state rank went from eleventh in two thousand and two to twenty-fifth in two thousand twenty to twenty-six out of fifty now. We used to be the highest spenders among the twelve Midwestern states, and now we're about seventh in dollars per student, depending on, where you look, according to the U.S. Census Bureau data, Wisconsin spends about fourteen thousand nine hundred per pupil, so we're a little over a thousand below that here. And nationwide, the average is sixteen thousand and a half per pupil, and the spending has gone up in the last twenty-five years, from two thousand two to two thousand twenty-three, from around the upper fourteens per pupil to, in the state, it's gone from, according to this data, from fourteen thousand five hundred to fourteen thousand eight hundred in the U.S., it increased from thirteen thousand to sixteen and a half thousand. So nationwide, spending per pupil has kind of outpaced us. The highest state spender is New York, where they spend twenty-nine thousand dollars per pupil. Twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two saw the largest percentage increase in public school per pupil spending in over twenty years. Wisconsin used to rank higher than average in personal income tax and total tax burden. Two thousand two, we were nineteen, or, we were fifth in two thousand and two. Now we're nineteenth in total tax burden. We used to spend more than the national average of personal income in education. Now we spend just slightly less. Three point three percent versus three point five percent is the national average. Our student population, and here's a big problem, student population in the U.S. from two thousand two to two thousand twenty-three went down seven point three percent versus in the U.S. as a whole only went down one point three percent.
State population went down two point?
Student population.
Yeah.
Student population, Wisconsin, yeah.
Seven hundred percent.
Went down a lot more than, according to the Wisconsin Policy Forum figures. Then I, they referenced the National Association of Educational Progress and those test results, and I looked into that a little bit, just to see where we stood in the Midwest and versus the U.S. You can go to that site. Just go to National Association of Educational Progress site. I, I didn't think of giving that to Colleen, but it's, you can just click on it in the WASB stuff. And then there's another educationdata.org organization where I got a couple of figures from too, that I couldn't find elsewhere. But I looked at the results for math and reading in the fourth and eighth grade, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four, which were the last results available. Twenty nineteen, basically, we're pretty much right in. I compared Wisconsin and Iowa and Minnesota, and I was a little surprised. Iowa's just a couple of points behind everybody, the other two, I should say, not everybody. But Wisconsin, Iowa, and Minnesota are pretty close, and we're mostly all a few points above the average in the U.S. For instance, fourth grade, and all the scores, math and reading pretty much declined between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four. For instance, Wisconsin, fourth grade math, between twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four, out of five hundred points, went from two forty-two to two thirty-nine. Nationwide, it declined by three also. Eighth grade, even a bigger decrease. Eighth grade math in Wisconsin, the score declined from two eighty-nine in twenty nineteen to two eighty-three in twenty twenty-four, and that, they said, was a statistically significant decrease. And nationwide, it also, it declined nine points, declined even more nationwide. Reading, in Wisconsin, it went from two twenty down to two fifteen between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four. Nationwide, it went from two nineteen to two fourteen, similar decrease. And then eighth grade reading, Wisconsin declined from two sixty-seven out of five hundred in twenty nineteen to two sixty, and nationwide, it declined, again, about, about five points. It declined not quite as much, five points, two sixty-two to two fifty-seven. So everything's grouped pretty closely. We look like we're a little bit above the national average, and we're right in there with a couple of neighboring states. But then I was thinking about what the significance to these scores is, because we're looking at, you know, our results from year to year, achievement results, and I don't know what the scores are. It'd be pretty easy to do standard deviations with our class sizes, but I just kind of assumed, you know, if everybody was one, two, or three points from the standard deviation, I kind of think, in order to call a change significant, say if we wanted an improvement, I, I'm kind of think ballpark significance would be like seven, eight, nine points change, something like that, if you say a class size is a hundred and fifty. So we're looking at a few points change this way and that way, and we want to strive for improvement, but a significant improvement would be something on the order of that, I think.
You know, and I look at the statistics, and the first thing I say, Phil, is there's a whole lot of apples and oranges here. I mean, you've got so many, you know, variables that, to me, it doesn't mean anything. Now, it's nice to say, you know, or be worried about below, we went four percent below, or, but there's so many differences in the district and states and rural. I mean, it just, I don't, to me, it doesn't make any sense.
Right, well, but you gotta, either you follow NOS and or you pick some standards felt. Best thing would be if we just looked at our own standards and say, you know, while they say that this is average, but this is what we want it to be here, and this is what we can achieve. But, yeah, I mean, a point here, a point there. It's always better to go up than down, but I can't disagree with you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Bert's got an update from the twenty twenty-five Summer Learning Symposium.
Well, I went to the Summer Learning Symposium sponsored by WASB at Stevens Point at the beginning of July, July eleventh and twelfth, and I've been there a couple times. I think some of the others have been there too, and, and very informative. They bring you up to date right away on legislative things. And the first session we had kind of blew my mind a little bit because it was by Joel Hesch, who I happen to know in education from somewhere, is the Superintendent of Austin. And he got up there and he told us how they got a referendum passed when last fall, they asked for seven million or whatever it was, and it got defeated. So then they lowered it. Bottom line, that they wanted to ask the community for one point seven million, and that got to. And that got defeated in February. So they met and the school board approved consideration to dissolve the district. And that seemed to get people excited. And that's what happened. They, they did get, uh, you know, some professional help and they did get, uh, the community involved in why they need this money. They had tours. It, it was really interesting how they went from, and then they got their seven million, their next referendum, they got their seven million. So I thought that was, you know, this was a guy, I think it was his first year as superintendent. And, uh, uh, he did a good job. So we, we talked on different things. One of the, the one was on accounting and, you know, data that you can measure for your students and personnel and operations. And, and they talked a little bit about how it's important for a lot of these for board members to know where you're going, which got into another session. And, um, well, I call it the, uh, SWAT method because one of the school districts, I believe it was, uh, it might've been, um, Arcadia, but they, uh, the SWAT method is strengths, weeks, opportunities. And, uh, you know, weaknesses and, and, uh, the, the, the school district that did it, uh, they had a lot of input. And it was very successful. Uh, next slide. Anyway, uh, the Linda Hall, she's on, head of the office of children's mental health director. Cause we've been talking here and had presentation on mental health. And they did some research in Wisconsin on stressors that students have. And I'm going to let, you know, you can just read that as you go up, Randy. And what were the stressors that they found out from students in relationship to mental health? And, and, uh, I thought that was quite interesting. And again, this is a, uh, you know, pretty professional, uh, survey that they did. And, uh, and then you can go up to, is there another one? Did you have? And then the students uh, share their thoughts and, and, uh, what's support? Having people who celebrate some of the good things, et cetera, et cetera. And talk to the students. And then there was one more, I think, wasn't there? Did you have?
Yeah.
Maybe got into.
And, and board members, this, Colleen did link this today in your online packet as well.
The research that tells us about, uh, social media and, uh, cell phones and the potential risks. Anyway, I thought I'd bring back, and if you ever want any, like Randy says, you can go. But it was an interesting presentation by the, uh, children's mental health director. And I thought, boy, this should really fit into our group that presented to us. Cause I think there's a lot of content there, plus I think would be an excellent resource for our mental health community. So that's all I have. Other than, they had a couple of other presentations that were really good. Lot kind of solidified some of the things we were doing. They had several, they had over a hundred and twenty-five people there, but they did have, I'd say maybe twenty or more people who were first time school board members. And, uh, what was really nice is to sit with other board members and and listen what's going on in their district and share things. That was one of the major benefits. That's all I have.
Any questions?
How often are the staff trained on mental health?
What did you say?
No, I was just asking Randy how often.
Youth, youth, mental health, first aid, all staff, um, are, are trained on that. Every, every new staff member that comes to the district is trained on that. And then depending on roles and Laurie, I may look to first and some pieces here, depending on jobs and professional development. You know, and there are some pieces during the year at, at in-service come up. But the, the formal one would be youth, mental health, first aid, um, that all staff members, um, receive when they come to the district. We have our own internal presenters there, um, that, that conduct that training for everyone. And then they do refreshers during the year, I know, during in-service.
Any other questions?
Well, I noticed at the bottom of, uh, one of Bert's charts there. Among the stressors of students was achievement pressure. Well, that's, that's kind of something that we just have to somehow teach kids to deal with because the pressure of not achieving eventually gets to be even worse. And then at the bottom, I saw that, uh, you know, half of the kids were stressed out by climate change, gun volley, violence and discrimination. But I think that's why when you teach topics like that, you have to have it a forum where you can have a fair discussion about things. Because, you know, if you listen, you know, if you listen to somebody that says the world's going to end ten years from now, which we've, we have heard. And if you let kids believe that, well, who wouldn't be stressed? But if you discuss those concepts in a class where people can ask questions and, and there's some perspective, that's going to take a lot of the stress out of it. But yeah, if we teach kids to be stressed, they're going to be stressed. And you're stressed when you're presented with situations that you really don't have any control.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you for that up, or that, uh, information, Bert. Upcoming meeting schedule on Thursday, coming up this week, the fourteenth. We have new teacher welcome luncheon at eleven forty-five at Lehman's. We've got a number of board members signed up. If you, uh, aren't signed up and are planning to attend or would like to attend, please let Colleen know. Actually let Katie Wick know. And, uh, she'll get you on that list and then, uh, you can join us. Then the back to school, all staff in service, Monday, August eighteenth at seven thirty A M. That's the continental breakfast and eight o'clock, the program begins in the auditorium. And, uh, we've got a couple of board members signed up for that. Anybody else, if you can attend that, please let Colleen know so she can get you signed up for that. And then there are between now and the first, uh, the sixth of November. There's four different webinars put on, put out by WASB. Those, no registration is required. Just sign, uh, go on, uh, WASB website, sign on and, and you're in. And then the fall regional meeting, October fifteenth, it's a Wednesday. That'll be here in Rice Lake again this year at Lehman's. Uh, four thirty, there's a pre-meeting with a little conference meeting there. And then the regional meeting begins at six o'clock. Registration is required for that. So please let Colleen know. And then, the fall legislative conference is Saturday, November eighth. That's in Stevens Point at the convention center over there. And registration is required for that as well. So if you can attend that, please let Colleen know. And that is the upcoming meeting schedule. District administrator comments?
Yeah, just a, a few things. Um, and Kevin, as you mentioned, our kickoff in-service is a week from today, just with the school year starting a little bit earlier. So, um, with that, um, uh, we get things going. And Thursday, the twenty-first, uh, so a week from this Thursday will be our day for new students and, and freshmen and fifth grade first day, as well as elementary parent teacher conferences. And then the first day for all students is Monday, the twenty-fifth. So coming two weeks from today.
Be here before we know it. All right. And all of our administrators and staff are all excited and ready for the school year to start.
Exactly. Why would we be?
I know. It's good.
There might be one or two things yet to do yet, but we have time, like, cause this thing got over in an hour.
All right. I would entertain a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one E and nineteen point eight five one C.
I will make the motion, but I would move to amend, uh, the closed session to strike, uh, item B nineteen eight five one C. Uh, the district administrator evaluation, uh, our committee is meeting a week from tomorrow and we will have something for the next, the following meeting. Yeah.
All right. So the motion has been made for just the first for letter A for nineteen point eight five one E. And that's individual employee contract is the second. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Closed. We are headed to closed.
Usually you have to do roll call, but whatever.
Oh yeah, we have to roll call.
I think everybody said yes. I'll do that. Well, you took care of the motion. So yeah, Phil, Kevin, Miriam, Bert, Nellie, Doug, Lori, Don and Andrew.
All yesses.